All right, good evening, everyone. Second week of school. Everybody is hanging on back in the world. Everybody is without a spoon, without a hitch, so let's go. Before we get started this evening, I wanted to introduce our AVE program manager and coordinator, Emily and Nancy, and I'm going to do a brief overview of AVE and some of the programs.
Nancy keeps saying, "No, you are." And I keep saying, "No, you are." We would like to, first of all, welcome all of you to the Adult Basic Education Space at the Northwest Family Service Center. We're really proud and excited to have you here tonight. And we do want to take just a minute of your time to talk a little bit about Adult Basic Education and the services that we provide. As you all know, we are a part of our Community Education Department, but we also really interface a lot with a lot of other programs and departments in the district. And so we're very fortunate to be a part of such a robust organization because not all AVE programs are quite as lucky as we are. So I want to extend my thanks to everybody for that because it really does make us one of the best AVE programs in the state. And it is my honor and privilege to be able to lead our program. So in general, Adult Basic Education provides services to adults age 17 and older who are no longer enrolled in K-12 education. And they come with a number of different educational goals and purposes in mind, but we provide five levels of English language learning classes for students who come whose first language is not English, who would like to gain additional everyday living and life skills, English communication, to be able to be an integrated part of our community, to be able to talk to their children's teachers, to be able to go to their local grocery store, to be able to just be able to feel connected and rooted in our community. And so we take that charge very seriously to help them be able to find their space and their voice while also helping them retain their first language and their culture through the activities and the assignments that we give to students. We also offer five levels of Adult Basic Education programming for students whose first language is English or for students whose first language may not be English, but they have a reading and writing and speaking proficiency out of roughly a sixth grade reading level. So we offer those five levels of English for adults. Again, those adults may come to us with very little formal education in their background, but they all have a goal of attaining either a high school credential or attaining basic academic skills so that they can move on to whatever comes next in their professional or their education career. So we really try to work hard to make our students feel welcome and feel connected to the programming that we serve while also helping make sure that they know what their choices are, not only while they're here, but what's going to happen as they continue out into the community. One thing that we're just extremely proud of, so I'll just take another second of your time if you don't mind, that I want to share with you all. We've been working really closely with Anthony and his team in our IT department. And one of the, I think, sort of the silver linings for us from the pandemic and the learning that we took is that we are capable of so much more than we ever thought we were. So while we made that transition to online learning essentially overnight, we all craved that desire, I think especially in the beginning, to be able to come back to like the way things were, right? We thought, "Oh, it'll be two weeks long, and then we'll be back to normal." And as it continued to not be normal and as it continued to, you know, for us to try to experience new things, we really started trying to listen to our students, we really tried to listen to our community, and we discovered that really people didn't necessarily want to come back into a building, nor did they really need to for us to be able to provide high-quality education. So we made the move with Anthony's support and his team's support to offer what's called high-flex learning. And this spring and this summer, we took out all of our old LCD projectors except this one that I'll use as a model for you. And we replaced them with a 70-inch monitor at the front of every room and a 55-inch monitor on the side or the back of every classroom, except this one, and an air tay which allows our teacher to be able to connect or our visitors to connect wirelessly to our large monitor. But more importantly, it allows for our students to be able to select if they come into the building to do their learning or if they choose to join our class from home. The difference between our online experience and what we're offering now, what we call in our field high-flex learning, is that when a student chooses to join from home, they start class, they log into their Google Meet at exactly the same time their peers are coming into the building. So if class starts at nine o'clock and you walk into a classroom, it might be that your classmate is logging onto the Google Meet, and we can see them on the 55-inch monitor. We're putting everything into Google Classroom. We're using all kinds of new technology. And then that student from home or in the classroom gets the same educational experience no matter where they are learning from. It is equal parts terrifying and exhilarating. And sometimes it's not even equal. Sometimes it's just way more terrifying. Because as teachers and as educators, we want to be the experts in the space, right? We want to have all the answers. We want to know what we're going to do and how it's going to go. And we've learned over the past couple of years that that's just simply not possible. And our students have embraced this option and this opportunity in ways that we could have never fathomed. As I was sharing with the superintendent just a little bit ago, I said, "It only takes one student to tell us their story about how their health is precarious and they can't always come into the building, but they would like to be learning," or about how they put their child on the bus at 8:45 and they can't be here for nine o'clock class on time, but if they only have to walk back from the end of their driveway or the end of the block and log in, that they can be engaged in learning. We have a student who expressed to us that they don't feel safe driving in the evening in their community. And so she said, "I'll come between now and like daylight save, when daylight savings ends because it's light out, and then I will see you again in the spring." But then she misses months and months of education. Now she can come to school, she can come to school, and she can come to school. And so we're really, really proud of the work that the team is doing and the service that they're providing to the community. So I can't do this work without Nancy. Nancy Johnson is our program manager. I can't do this work without the support of Anthony and everybody in this room to make this happen. And most importantly, to the 22 licensed teachers who work and teach class not only in the morning but also in the evening, and to our seven support staff. And I really can't express my gratitude and my thankfulness for this team for, on those days when they feel more terrified than exhilarated, that they dig deep and they make that exhilaration continue to move our program forward. So thank you so much for being here this evening. We do have class going on this evening, so you very well may see students or staff moving up and down the hallways. Just a couple of housekeeping items. There is a restroom right at the end of the hallway or the middle part of our hallway here in the lobby area for you. There's also a bottle filler out there if anybody needs something to drink. And also, if any of you would be interested in seeing high-flex in operation, you could join as an online student or you could come into class and see it in person. And if you send me an email, I'll get you connected to a teacher because we're really excited to show it off. So thank you again, everybody, for being here, and I hope you have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's exactly why we love to get all the CCL programs. I guess there's a time lapse. Sorry. All right, so this work session of the Ossio School Board is being conducted at the Adult Basic Education Center in Brooklyn Center. Today is September 2022. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within 24 hours after the work session is ended. This work session will be followed by a school board listening session, which will not be audio recorded. The purpose of this school board work session is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and to be equitable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. In the outcome of today's work session, our board members will receive information on the 2021 and 2022 district stakeholder survey results and the board committee will also review. To acknowledge attendance, the evening onset board members, cabinet members, and staff go around the table to you.
Jackie Moskata-Jones, School Board Director.
Kelly Parhart, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools.
Laura Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Thomas Burke, School Board Member.
Anthony Mertens, Executive Director of Technology.
Tamara Grady, Chicago Hers, Ossio School Board Member.
Kayla, Community Relations Director.
Brian Seabrook, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Steve Fliss, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools.
Jenna John, Chief Officer, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Tom Lekun, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Rob Menzola, Director of Learning and Achievement.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement.
Tony Simon, School Board Director.
Tim Bomitier, General Counsel.
Corey McIntyre, Superintendent.
And Director Heather Douglas, also here, she just stepped out for a minute. And I am Kelsey Gatzmalt, School Board Director, and I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. And I just want to echo, thank you, Brian, to your team for having us here to have this great space and it's a reminder of all the services we can have under one roof. So the Brooklyn Center has been very busy leading up to the start of the year, and we are over projection enrollment, so we're good things. And it's two months early, we've been out at another site for our work sessions, but really lucky in that pattern of being able to experience different sites in our district. So to set up tonight's presentation, so last month at our work session at Rice Lake, we discussed how we're working towards our vision and being proactive as we enter into the first full year of our new strategic plan. So this is some data that is a bit of a look backwards, even though we're trying to move forwards, right? But it does inform us about how we're going to implement our operational plan, our district department plans, and our school operational plans. And we discussed last month that our launching point for this year has been set by you as board members through your governance role and your work to set out the roadmap for the district with the new strategic plan, including our mission, vision, core values, and strategic directions that we're aligning to. So this is another example of our management team carrying all those efforts through our responsibilities. And at our work session last month as well, our district leadership presented our initiatives for the year, our high priority initiatives for the district, and you also saw the department plan. So it really lays out our day-to-day work. And I just kind of want to reemphasize some things that I said last month. Hopefully you'll see everything we do connecting back to that strategic plan. So the results you'll see tonight, you'll always tie this back to how we're moving forward. And that's really the key element here. I think there's some themes that we continue to see through, you'll see tonight, even leading up to looking at these results. Our communities, our families, our staff have really said, our scholars have told us to achievements at the core. How do we continue to pursue an achievement? How do we continue to support and build connection, ensuring our scholars are supportive in those everyday needs, the mental health needs, the basic needs that they have? And then how do we continue to, through an equity perspective, give our scholars what they need when they need it? And with this in mind, you're going to see last year's survey results, and say that again. So we'll kind of take a step back, and you'll have a window and a little bit more understanding of some of the primary patterns. We're not going to dig into every pattern, but you'll see the primary patterns and trends in the stakeholder surveys at the district level. You do have in your materials the supporting documents of the executive summaries. And again, these surveys were taken last year during a time when we were still very much in the throes of what was happening as far as impact and effects from the pandemic. But it gives us a window into what people were feeling at that point in time, and it really helps us position ourselves as we move forward. So that's really the key point I want to make is, as we move forward, how do we utilize this information? How do we learn from what our experiences were in our district at this points in time last year? And how do we align those experiences to our new strategic plan, our high priority initiatives, and our department plans, all the way down to our site level plans that we're continuing to build out? Our theme this year has been "One District for Every One and Everyone." And we have seen examples already in, what, day seven of school, that we have reset and we're trying to reimagine how school environments need to live out those core values that you've set for us as a board. I've already seen two in a few days, I know my team, everyone that has been out so far, this awesome resilience and a fresh, new sense of renewal. The theme in the reset and reimagining is a lot of, we've been using those words recently. And even with some new diversity, like the workforce, which we're seeing as our alt-districts relate, we're seeing the power of the collective effort in that continued resetting and reimagining. So with that kind of backdrop, I'm going to turn it over to our team. We have Tom and Janet here from our Data and Assessment Team in the Department of Learning and Achievement. We'll walk through the presentation, and then we'll take questions at the end, once you kind of get really have the context. And one of the things we mentioned too, we waited till we had all three sets of data so that there's a little easier ability to compare and contrast between what we are doing for families, staff, and our scholars. So with that, I'll turn it over to our team. And Rob, I'm going to leave you to talk here, I guess.
I am going to start. So as Superintendent McIntyre talked about, today we're really going to be looking at the data from the three stakeholder surveys. And the purpose of the presentation is to look at some patterns and some trends that we're able to see at the district-level data and then continue our work in aligning this to the, aligning this information to the strategic direction and plan. We're going to start talking about street data. And on this slide, you'll see the three levels of data as described in the book Street Data. When I think about these levels, I go very visual. I think about way up high, the satellite data. It's like you're looking down. You don't see a lot of detail, but you can see patterns and you can see things happening on the ground from the satellite. And then our mid-level data, that map data, I kind of think about it as you're doing, you're on the map view in Google Maps where you can kind of see a little bit more detail. You can't see every house, but you can see a lot more that's going on. And then the lowest level of data is the street level, which is really like you're walking along a street and observing, or you're on that street view from Google Maps. It gives a more detailed vision. And so as I said, that top level is the satellite data, and this is very high-level data. This type of data helps us see patterns and trends, but lacks the specificity required to transform instruction or make decisions on programming. As the data is great, it varies greatly across the district, in our sites, in our classrooms, and the grade levels. It can, and then the second level of data is that map data. And the map data, as I said, has a little bit more detail. It can give us context of some things that are happening, and it gives us more information of what do we want to find out more about? What are some other things we need to do to learn about what this data is telling us? And then the third level of data is the street level data, and that's that really granular data. And we can look at, we can analyze this data by looking really deeply at questions that students have answered and their specific answers. We can listen, do some listening sessions, observations through sites, and interviews are one way to collect this kind of data. And the data can inform the causes that we're looking for and inform our actions moving forward. And as a system, we need all three types of data because as we work to ensure that the daily lived experiences of our students, families, and staff are aligned to the strategic plan. Tonight, our focus will really be on that high level, that satellite data. This data will help us identify trends across our system and the gaps between groups. We'll also speak to some of the really high-level map data as we look at some specific survey items and identify which groups rated some questions higher than others. Sites receive this data at the school-specific level, so they see their own site data. And they can disaggregate this data and drill down to specific questions, groups, grade levels, and classrooms. They use this data to drive further information collection and to create their site improvement or operational plans. And as Superintendent McIntyre said, as we're looking about this data, really keeping in mind that this data happened before we completely rolled out the strategic plan in our sites. So it was before all of that happened. Tom is going to start the discussion on our student and staff data.
Thank you. Yeah, so really, we administer this student stakeholder survey each year in grades three to 12. And so that's really the piece that we're focusing on, that is administered November through April. And then, of course, we have an opt-out process, so parents can opt their child out of this survey process. We had, we had an 81% response rate last year. So one of the things that we're looking at here is, we want to look at the change in the percent positive over this period of time from the 1617 school year to 2122. And we're looking at scales, which are just groups of questions that are on the same topic. That's the way to think of a scale. And we chose this period of 1617 to 2122 primarily because we had the grade level change, you know, that happened just prior to the 1617 school year. And so we wanted to have something that was consistent over that period of time because we were going to break this, not like by grade range. So, and then as Rob mentioned, this was shared with principals and APs, and they also got their school-level results. All right. So this slide we can look at, we had it in a previous board work session in June. And so over the past five years, we've seen that progress for each scale on the survey. District-wide, we lost ground on two of the three scales related to our district mission. And the greatest decrease is we're in middle school grades, specifically on the scales of Achieve Dreams, Lifelong Learning, and Belonging. And keep going. Yeah, so if we look at this table, this one expands on what we provided in June by including the elementary and high school results on these questions, sorted from greatest overall increase to greatest overall decrease. Here, we're moving from satellite to map data. There were significant increases from 2017 to 2022 on multiple questions at high school and elementary school. For example, on the top there, you can see for elementary, in my school, students are shooting with respect. That one improved 6% from 2017 to 2022. However, we also had several questions where we saw significant drops, like on the very bottom with digital learning. I've learned a lot when I've done classwork online. That's one where we saw decreases for three through five and six to eight that were in the double digits. Okay, so the next piece we'll look at is the staff stakeholder survey. And when we look at the staff stakeholder survey, all the staff received this opportunity to respond each February. And here, we're going to look at the change in percent positive from 2015 to 2022 on various survey scales and questions. And again, those scales are just the groups of questions. And the reason that we chose 2015 is because we have the same scales over that period of time, same groups of questions. So we're looking at 2015 and 2017, and we can see that we've got district and school results that were also shared with the principals and APs in April. Thanks. So the next piece, we can look at the reporting groups that were used in the staff survey. So we have site type. We can look at the different grade level bands in which we have buildings. And then also, we have adult education, like where we are here, and district offices. We also broke this out by staff race, and so you can see the categories that are there, as well as for gender. We have male, female, and non-binary. And for staff group, we have teacher, ESP, and other. So when we look at the change from 2015 to 2022 by scale, we can see that there was an increase in perceptions about race and culture just here at the line. So that's the green there, the 5% increase. There are also two groups 5% above and three groups 5% below the district average on race and culture. That's what we're seeing in the next columns that are to the right of that green 5%. However, similar to what we saw in the student survey, there were significant decreases on the staff survey from 2015 to 2022 on the three scales related to the district mission. The next table shows the questions on which staff indicated the greatest increases from 2015 to 2022. So here, we're at the question level as opposed to just the scale level. These questions are from the school environment and communications scale and the race and culture scale. Multiracial staff were among the groups that were 5% above the district average for three different questions, which you can see in the column that's the second from the right. The final slide here is, when we look at the change on specific questions, we see a pattern that's again similar to the student survey data. So one difference is that staff perceived a significant drop on the contributing to community scale. Elementary staff tended to be more positive on the contributing to community and lifelong learning scales than the district average. So those are some of the patterns that were emerging again at that map level when we look at that stakeholder survey data. And at this point...
And just a reminder, I think Tom mentioned it as we started too, that we compared the student data to the 2017, or 1617 school year to this year because that's the year before that, we were in junior highs and then moved to middle schools that year. And then also, the staff data was compared to the 2015 school year compared to this year because that's the year that we started using this, the same kind of assessment.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So now we can start taking a look at our family stakeholder survey results. So the family stakeholder survey underwent some major revision throughout the winter and spring of last school year. The revision took place in order to remove some inequitable language that existed on the survey and to bring it into alignment with the district's new strategic plan and strategic directions. The strategic directions were embedded within the survey as the five section headings, and every question within each section related to the achievement of that particular strategic direction. So the survey revision process was very collaborative, which was very fun for me. The family and community engagement work-based team were amazing partners and helped to facilitate feedback from the RICE committee through multiple iterations. And then the ESC departments, including the secondary team, LNA coordinators, communications, DL4A, and the multilingual team provided feedback as well. The multilingual team was instrumental in ensuring that the language used in the survey would translate well into other languages and would be accessible at a sixth-grade reading level. The elementary principals and secondary principals also provided feedback. And so one thing to keep in mind with all of this revision is that all these results would be considered baseline data for this, for this reporting period since we wouldn't have anything to compare it to from previous years. So the survey revision work connects to our strategic direction C, where we promote inclusive participation of all of our communities and provide tightly relevant and easily accessible communication. Okay, so the method for the family stakeholder survey changed up a little bit than in past years as well. It was distributed toward the end of the school year, which is different than in past years where it was previously distributed in the winter. This changes me to allow for this big revision process and to make sure it was collaborative. The survey was sent out via email and SMS or text message, and this was the first time we were able to send the survey out via text message, and it was very helpful with our response rates. So approximately half of our survey responses came from these SMS links, and they were particularly helpful at reaching our families that we don't typically connect with via email. So that specifically, our families who identify as Black and African-American responded at a rate of 14% higher via SMS than email. And then families identifying as Asian responded at a rate of 5% higher, and our families identifying as Hispanic or Latino responded at a rate of 2% higher via text message over email. The survey and communications were translated into the four languages that we can see on the screen, and we're able to trans, and will be able to translate it into a role for our next distribution period. The survey communications, specifically the invites and the reminders, were revised to be less text-heavy and have a modern feel based off of marketing best practices. The survey was sent to a representative sample to ensure that we would hear from all of our family members and our member, family members with demographics that match district proportions. The demographics that were sampled for included race and ethnicity, students receiving special ed services, EL services, free reduced-price meals, genders, school, and grade. And based on the sample, a majority of each group responded. So this year, the number of responses was 949, which is typical for what we receive on the survey. We usually come in around the 1,000 mark. And response rates from each grade follow trends from several other surveys where we have the highest participation rate at the elementary level, and it tends to take a little bit of a dip at the secondary level. For additional context, typical survey rates or response rates, I should... For additional context, typical survey rates, or response rates, I should say, from surveys where an organization is sending it to external stakeholders, so in that, in this case, it would be our families or community members, can lie anywhere in the range of 5 to 30%. With surveys being distributed from unknown senders, like myself, tend to be on the lower end of that range. A survey response rate of 50% or higher is considered excellent and would be considered the result of strong personal relationship between the organization and the stakeholder. So many other factors that impact response rates include survey fatigue, which we might experience a little bit of right now, attitudes toward the survey industry such as trust and data safety, respondents, internet resources, computer literacy, and the cost-reward ratio for individuals. So next, we can take a look at some of the survey results, starting with how elementary families responded. Out of the 40 items or questions on the survey, these were the three that had the highest rate of positive responses, and positive response options were often and always. So 99% of families say that their scholar's school has a positive relationship with their community. 97% say that their family, the school as a whole is welcoming to their family, and 95% say that they feel like they belong at their scholar's school. All three of these questions came from the survey section that align to the continuous improvement in reducing disparities, barriers, and inequities. The next information we can take a look at are the lowest rates of positive responses among families. And these were 73% of families saying that their scholars had the opportunity to influence their learning experience. And we define influencing their learning experience as being able to make choices on how to learn, what to learn, and how to show their learning. And then 70% of families said that their scholar's cultural history is represented accurately in the curriculum. And 63% of families say staff provide regular updates on the progress of their scholar. And we defined regular updates as being at least two times per month, and the updates should be specific to their scholar. So that was the context for that. There were a couple of items within the inclusive communication with community section that I thought were interesting, that would also inform the communication that we'll soon be rolling out. So we can see at the elementary level, the top three current sources of communication in rank order are email, phone calls, followed by talking points or text messages. And the preferred method of communication in rank order was email, talking points or text messages, and phone calls. And these results could possibly be a basis for providing more communication via text message. Like I shared before, this mode of communication was really effective for this particular survey. Other communication options families have had, families had when responding to this question were social media, CSO, Schoology, postal mail, P H R E flyers, school newsletters, the district 279 Connectee newsletter, school or district staff, and Word of Mom. So out of all of those options, these are the ones that kind of rose to the top. At the middle school level, the three items that had the highest rate of positive responses were 93% of families saying that school as a whole is welcoming to their family. 93% said that my scholar has access to the supports they need to be successful at school. And 92% said that their scholar is provided with the appropriate technology they need to learn. So similar to the elementary level, the top two items were in the continuous improvement in reducing disparities, barriers, and inequities section. And then the third item was in the innovation excellence accountability and sustainability The lowest rate of positive responses among families at the middle school level were 45% of families saying staff create space for me to provide feedback regarding my scholar. 44% of families say staff know my scholar's interests, and 42% say school staff have helped my scholar set goals for their future. So we can see that that last item there connects with what middle school students, what we found in the student stakeholder survey. The middle school students said on the Achieve Dreams scale, and specifically the survey items around goal setting and identifying dreams. So that first item here is in the inclusive communication section. The second item comes from the culture of achievement section, and that third item comes from the innovation excellence accountability and sustainability section. Kind of all across those three. On this side, we can, on this slide, excuse me, we can see how families and middle school scholars responded to the communication items. So here we can see that similarly to the elementary level, email and phone calls were the highest in terms of current sources of communication. And at this level, Schoology replaced talking points or text messages in the third spot. However, when we look at families' preferred sources of communication, it mirrors what we see at the elementary level, where email was the most preferred, followed by talking points or text messages, and then phone calls coming in third. And last but not least, we can take a look at the results at the high school level. 95% of families say communication from their scholar's school is provided in their preferred language. 94% say that the school as a whole is welcoming to their family, and 94% say that their scholar's school has a positive relationship with their community. The lowest rate of positive responses among families at the high school level were 54% of families saying that school staff have helped their scholar set goals for their future. 52% saying that staff provide regular updates on the progress of their scholar, and 48% say that staff know their scholar's interests. That first item was one that we saw in the middle school section that's having the lowest rate of positive responses as well. However, we don't see that 5% or more change on that student stakeholder survey that we do at the middle school level. This item comes from the innovation excellence accountability and sustainability strategic direction. And then the next one comes from the communication and with community section, and the final one comes from the culture of achievement section. The last survey item is also one that we saw among the three lowest rates of positive responses at the middle school, that staff knows scholar's interests. So just in summary, across all grade levels, many of the highest ratings came from that section or that relates to the strategic direction of continuous improvement and reducing disparities, barriers, and inequities. And then the section from which the lowest rates came from varied, but there was one question in each grade level that showed up from that inclusive communication with community section. And then on this slide, we can take a look at those communication responses as well. Families from high school scholars both seemed narrowed responses from those of middle school scholars, with Schoology included at third in the rank order list. And it also dropped off when looking at the preferred sources of communication. Talking points and text messages again came in at the bottom, or came into the list at the second or the two spot. So that's final, turn it over to Robyn for your next steps.
So in summary, the stakeholder survey lifts up patterns and trends for us to see and make, start to think about and ask questions about. Stakeholder survey data is used for progress monitoring on our vision cards. The indicators from these three surveys show up in the vision cards for strategic directions A, B, and C, as shown here on the slide. This demonstrates our progress as a system to alignment with our strategic directions. The information learned from the stakeholder surveys, as well as additional data collection that we do in order to learn more about root causes, will be used to prioritize actions that address continuous improvement in our district departments and site plans. As we continue to dig deep into learning about the daily life, the daily lived experiences of our scholars, families, and staff through these three, through the three levels of street data, the satellite map and street data, we'll use the information to ensure that our actions and goals are aligned to our strategic plan.
All right, so Robyn, let me add a little extra context, and then we'll offer a chance for you to offer your comments and questions. That last slide, our strategic plan, I always refer this around being, you kind of, either intentionally or unintentionally, as you spoke of this last year, really landed on some key, key themes here. So I've been looking at this data as some kind of new baseline, right? So as we launched this new plan, that data that was collected ahead of this launch is where we're starting from. But, you know, I was on a mental health panel last week in County and talked about a couple of themes that showed up in this data too. You can kind of see in there some themes, you know, when families and scholars and staff were going through a lot of crisis the last couple of years and then last year while these surveys were done, there are some themes around wanting communication, wanting feedback. We've talked a lot about all these themes, right? You can kind of see it in the data, that transparency part around communication. And then I think of our three-year operation plan. What do we have as a high priority? A communication plan. We have, I have it two places, family and community engagement, district-wide communications, and then the site communication tools. How are we connecting with our families and our scholars at the sites? There's a theme in here that all those, what I see is there was at times last year, a little bit of a lack of hope for the future. So you can kind of see it in some of the data there, and I think there was just so much weight on things we were dealing with previously. It shows up in different ways, but that belonging and connectedness and that kind of that hope for the future. So by the board launching this, now this is kind of that rebranding, and I was thinking back to, it had been 10, 12 years since this was done, and, you know, you went through four superintendents in two years, and then a pandemic. So a lot of those things adding up led to a reset of this. And the core values that the board landed on, the belonging, all of them, the belonging one really sticks out to me, and the transparency one, really, I think you can see it in the data. Middle school probably in my mind had the hardest, like the data was most troubling to me. And the middle schoolers who are now freshmen, their whole middle school career was interrupted multiple times, right? So there's, I think we're seeing the realities of that and, you know, get back to focusing on, and also the things that were around academic and mental health supports, academic focus and instruction. So that, there's kind of that hope piece, that belonging and connectedness that we think we're seeing a renewed sense of in the last few days, being back. Big Center, I got a lot of staff saying, I'm back to doing what I'm, I know what to do, I'm back to doing what I do best. And that's, to me, a renewed sense of hope and some of those things that kind of showed through in conversations at the downtown buildings. So those are just some themes, I think, of the street level data, I guess, and the conversations. I know our team has shared the same types of feedback. So again, I think we've got new baseline data as we launch our new plan. I think you'll see not only our district-wide initiatives, but if you did look at those department plans, a lot of things that surfaced here, we are targeting very specific strategies to address. And where you landed in December by approving this plan here, I think we have the roadmap, we have the roadmap to address the issues that we saw there. So I guess with that, turn it over to Robyn, we'll open it up for comments, questions. One last thing is we'll be making connections to our vision cards, so the kinds of data that we see here now over time, and then measuring our progress with our vision cards from before as well. How do we be accountable to the implementation of our district initiatives, our department plans, and then our site plans as well, our site operational, I think you saw last month. So thank you for letting me add some context to that. So now open it up for comments, questions.
So thinking of that context, that's really helpful. Do you see a correlation, or does the team see a correlation, and how would you articulate that to our academic results this year? Because to me, it seems like pretty clear correlation, but do you see that as well?
Yeah, whole state results around, right? And ours included. I think, I remember when we, last two years, we talked about taking statewide assessments in the middle of the pandemic, like this doesn't make a lot of sense because of the interruptions that we had, but we'll take those results for what they are. And just from a purely academic standpoint, our priorities here with a lot of core instruction adoptions and intervention programming with NTSS. So, you know, we, ELA, social studies, health, science, physics, chemistry, secondary math, a lot of new, new efforts in the academic areas, along with interventions and support. So I wasn't surprised, I didn't really surprise by seeing the results we got because of what we were dealing with last year, and a renewed sense of focus and intentionality around instruction. Kind of like I've been saying, doubling down on instruction and construction because we're in a better spot to be able to do that now. So Rob, if you'll try to hear me say that a lot, but hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, well, I was specifically kind of thinking, as I was reflecting on this before today and today, that it's an amazing question, you know, about getting help, being able to ask questions, being able to receive help, knowing where to go for help, high management skills, these are really key elements to academic success, where areas that be slipped, and when it's the actual percentages, not only are they split, but they're not in a great spot to begin with. So, and we do have our strategic plan, but to me, it's, you know, are there any new tactics or new thinking on things that aren't yet on that plan or work to help students set goals specifically, or any tactical items to be able to force correct on this early this year? So do you see different outcomes in terms of how students are experiencing their academic career as well as the outcomes of testing and things like that?
I won't speak for our team, I'll show my thoughts after you've understood.
Well, one of the things that's happening this year is the social emotional learning implementation that's starting in second try. And part of that at high schools is, and in middle schools, really in going alongside with the ramp up to readiness and the college career readiness goals, and that is embedded in the advisory curriculum that's moving forward. So we're actually having a team start working very soon to really look deep about our advisory classes and see what needs to be, what should be kept in place, what needs to be supplemented with the social emotional learning, and what kind of goals we have around self-affirmation, really making sure that we have that ability to advocate for ourselves, that students have that ability to advocate for themselves, ask what they need, and have an adult that they can connect with. So that's the part of that focus of that social emotional learning.
Probably, we had to, think of the timing of when these surveys were being administered. They had to close for two weeks because we had too many people sick. We barely could keep the doors open, run the buses, and provide food, just basic needs, let alone just talk about instruction. So now, fast forward to the last two weeks and hopefully into the future, we're back to really focusing on instruction and not consumed by operational factors, right? And that, to me, is exciting, especially with the program improvement process that's happening and really getting back to consistency and the lack, you said so many interruptions. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak to that, but.
Well, you know, the point I'm thinking about, Cor, is just the conversations with the leaders. And, you know, as they were looking at some of their survey data, especially around visibility, and the amount of, you know, especially in the elementary, the amount of class coverage and disruption to, you know, just being able to have that sort of visible presence in either the building or, you know, supporting teachers in classrooms, I know was something that, you know, they're looking forward to this year to be able to sort of begin to kind of move back to that, that normal piece. But that was very interrupting last year. And I think that's what in part kind of surprised our leaders too. You know, there was that, coming into the year, that excitement and momentum to be back in in a very different way. And as you mentioned, coming out of the school because of the, you know, the illness and just that kind of continuous disruption, I think we're going to be looking at some, hopefully, a very different sort of. And I think we're going to be looking at some, hopefully a very different sort of experience for our leaders and people that support.
Definitely, I remember feeling, even myself, the feeling of isolation we had during the initial year. And now to be able to focus back on belonging, some of our core values here, and those relationships consistently doing that. I think those will make a big difference when construction stopped, started, stopped, started. Or we didn't have the teachers, we didn't have the subs, we didn't have time to bring some of our scholars in the auditoriums. We didn't have teachers at all for their class, right? Those were very disruptive moments during the year, so.
That's a good point as far as the timing of that is taken as well. And of course, you know, the disruptions of the past three years. Would we consider administering pulse survey of some of these key questions that we feel like we would like to see changes with? Because we don't want to wait until late in the year again, look back a year later and say, could we should we have done something that I.
Possibly, yeah, we haven't had much conversation about that. We did do some pulse surveys that first year of the pandemic, but that was, they were really around remote learning, distance learning. Kind of what were people experiencing with the closure was highly centered on the impact of that. So I think we could rethink how to get a quick touch point on these throughout the year.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at this information, I think about some of the same kinds of things. And plus the conversations I've had with principals and families in our community. There's a variety of experiences happening right now overwhelmingly positive, which is great. You know, a lot of people are saying, finally feels normal again, which is really good to hear. But also in some of these areas where we weren't really doing that great to begin with and with our test scores declining, I think it would be really important for us to evaluate sooner rather than later so that we can intervene quicker if there is a problem that needs to be addressed or if we're finding that we're still not, people are still not feeling connected. Particularly for those freshmen who are finding their way in a high school and they don't even, they didn't even really experience middle school. Those are the, those kids I am really concerned about in particular. They kind of seem to be struggling a little bit. And also some of those kids that are kind of new to the middle school experience, that at those transitional stages, like we really need to get a hold of those kids.
One of our strategies too is to bring in monitoring reports that we mapped out last month so that you were coming back and reporting out on our progress. And then next month, the work session will kind of informally, but give you a how this first month of school went, right? Where are we, where are we doing well, where are we still struggling, we all have the workforce issues and things like that. But how did the first four to five weeks go? And give you a chance to just hear a little bit from each department, what has changed and what still challenges us.
How often do each building look at their own program improvement plan? I know I'm getting a little street data out here, but how often do they look at that plan and review it? Does it look at their BSc, does it look at that or?
Well, no, we're rolling out the new operation plan model for a building, so.
So formally, three times. And informally, they're supposed to be looking at it all the time. Dirt repices. Yes, let's start with.
This year, Jen and Tom are going out with the team from the Department of Educational Equity throughout the year also to touch base with principals about their operational plan and really to focus on the data and ask if there's any additional support in data or data collection that the sites need in order to make sure they're on track and are measuring their, their operation plans.
Tom, could you give a minute, this description of what your data dig process was like here in the last few weeks?
Yeah, yeah, so for August, we had three-hour data digs this year and so.
For each site?
Yeah, for each site and it was generally on location. And moving to the three-year plan, it was really wanting to provide a greater explanation with regard to how this new plan works. But we really dug in a little deeper with regard to data, I would say. Really provided some additional tables that they didn't have previously, something with regard to proficiency, bringing in the fast bridge growth this time. So there's definitely some positives over there. We had behavior data that we had made available that really we didn't have consistently prior to that. And we also had the family state over survey data that was added and incorporated within the data days. I feel like there was so much more participation this year. Really, there was, I think, a broader representation of our community, I would say. Even though it is still staff that are coming together, I think there's just a broader representation of equity. And I think that it did change the tone of the conversation. So, yeah, for me, I felt like they were very productive. Jenna did about half of them too.
Well, we always take, we always ask for people's impression and do a survey about how did the data dig meet your needs? And what did you take away from that? And they were, the responses that we got from all sites were very positive. With the changes that were made in the data digs and also how ready they were to continue to work on their operational plan. They felt very prepared. We spent some time humanizing the data, really making sure that sometimes, I think, when we give like these high-level numbers, this kind of satellite data, it doesn't even seem like we're talking about kids sometimes, right? It's like 10% here, 30% here. And really making sure that we focused on the students that they had in front of them. So there were case, some case studies done at each site to talk about this is the student, these are the attributes of this student in the PR. So maybe some opportunities to support this student as they move forward. So I think that was very successful also.
Has been a change in our work for the last number of years is the humanizing the data. So it wasn't even all that long ago that all of us can probably remember that everything was supposed to be just by student number and more anonymous and things like that. And now our focus is on, no, know the student, know that student. They're not a number, you know, on a test result, for example, if they use their student ID number. But call the student by his or her or their name and, and make sure to humanize that data. Like long gone are the days of anonymity in that respect. And that we really want our PLT teams and all of our work on the schools to focus on humanizing the data for each individual student so that it is personal and it feels that way.
Maybe back to Dr. Simons, your point earlier, I think you framed it differently. Correct me if I'm misinterpreting, but your question sort of like, what are we going, what are we doing differently to get different results, right? And this packet from last month, this is all different, right? The whole way we're aligning our efforts is really our efforts align to, we can change and get different results, right? So we're two weeks in, but I think, hopefully you're hearing a renewed commitment to that. And effectively, three-hour data digs at each site, and then they were building their site plans around what their data says about their school, really getting to that granular level.
I think, I think I just would offer that, so I don't think we're feeling positive. So please, so just interpret that. And there is an urgency of now with our leaders that is exciting. And that they are, they told us last spring, we need a reset, right? And there's an urgency in going back to the basics and really looking at our data and being engaged in with continuous improvement principles to better understand how we support what kids need right now. So I think the idea of a pulse survey aligns beautifully with what we're, what we're trying to offer through our partnership with the, with the expanded data digging experience for our sites. So I think, I think no one's satisfied. I mean, we realize we have a lot of work to do.
Essentially, those data days, I cite, and you're really curious, say, where was there something that was different? Where maybe one of the results may be significantly better than the average and how are, is he nodding? So, so what could be, be learned that we're doing really well and replicate elsewhere? So all of the best practices, and I know I like to ask a lot of site-specific creations. I really think we can learn from our system already that, that our teachers, that our teaching community, that our system has answers. And what we just need to be able to have that balance of getting deep in the data, but then taking action on that and really highlighting where we're seeing success as a transplant across the district. So that's exciting for that, you know, that I hear that you're saying you've done. And I'm guessing that that's kind of some of the things that you're seeing as well.
Director Brooks, I, I might interrupt you earlier, you looked like you were going to say something and I jumped in, so I'm going to come back.
I wasn't worried. I mean, really, I think what stuck out to me the most is the middle school's survey results, especially having two middle schoolers. Specifically, when we talked about achieving dreams, you know, I don't know what Director Davis or Chair Nelson Wollin's experience has been the same, but my middle schoolers, their dreams right now are like if they can land a boyfriend or girlfriend. Like that's really what they're focused on right now. And so I, I guess for me, like I really wish that there was more data to understand what that means to a middle schooler and what sort of dreams should they be working toward versus the dreams that they would inevitably work toward once they get to high school. So I think that's just one thing that stuck out to me that's sort of missing is, I guess, back to that point of humanizing the data, you know, how much deeper can we get in actually understanding what it is middle school scholars are looking for, or looking to get out of middle school. And I also say that, you know, with the caveat that what, you know, I do have a scholar in Abbott, which seems like an environment where she is allowed and encouraged to actually dream and sort of work toward that. So I don't know what that looks like, you know, for students that aren't in Abbott. And then the other thing that I thought was really interesting in the data was the 70% of families, my scholar's cultural history is represented accurately in the curriculum. I think for that one, something that I need more of is just what is the demographic breakdown of that specific question? Does that look different in our schools in the district that are more represented by BIPOC communities or immigrant communities? Does it look different in a different part of the district? I think I'm really curious about that because one of the things that keeps coming up, at least in my discussions, is how we can better connect with community members and community leaders to bring some of that cultural representation and learning into schools. Especially when we may not have the staff already in place to be able to conduct that learning equally across the district. So that, I think was something that I was looking for more information as well. But other than that, all in all, I didn't see any increases. Actually saw some great successes in this data that we can, I think we should celebrate.
I can share your middle school experience, I had three middle school daughters the last three years on their way out of high school. But you just made my heart stop and you said boyfriends, so boyfriends, whatever it is for them. But one thought I had was an example, Maple Grove Middle School did that student conference. So they, in the case of our scholars, about what do they want to see different, about how their experiences at that school. And we've talked about doing that in other sites as well. So I know our sites, our middle school especially, I think we saw that when I talked about our superintendents, middle school was wild, like that really seemed to be where the pain was, right? The experience was really, you know, the impact was much bigger than it seemed to be, you know, at middle school. So how do we do things a little differently there? And I think our sites, I think, do probably better, but they're, they're really digging into what does that mean at their school? And how do they engage with their, their families? And how do we position our staff better to connect with that middle school age group in a different way? One other example, so the Office of Library of Minnesota themselves. Well, we finally got, my first time I got to meet with their director this summer. And now we're out in our second meeting. These were things that we just couldn't do very easily my first three years. So building those connections, we're in a better space to do that and begin to partner more. We were so isolated before. So we just, we aspired to those things, but it was really hard. So things are opening up a bit more and it's becoming a little easier to make those connections. We have so many rich partnerships that are out there for us. So.
You actually made a good point and I forgot to mention this as well. You know, having middle schoolers, at least for me, most of that has been in the pandemic. And it's really easy to access their teachers when they're in elementary. But I have, even as a part of the work, felt disconnected from their middle school teachers. I don't know if that's just because they went from one to seven or what that is. But even as a school member, I don't always know when it's best or how to get connected with staff other than reaching out to the principal. So it is usually an opportunity there.
Yeah, UK and our team are supporting our sites, that site and communication plan. We're studying this year, site communication tools and what are the better tools. I won't say for UK, but I know that's one of our leverage, one of the best practices to help bridge those gaps better. Director Brady, I was gonna ask too, are you listening?
Yeah, well, first of all, thanks for everyone for putting this together. And I really appreciate the effort that was done with the RISE committee and the ECF staff and principals to align this survey to our strategic plan. I'm sure it will help us achieve a fair amount of work. What gives me hope is that it does seem like our system overall has better embraced equity, raised the culture, is outlined in our strategic plan. But when we look at the street level data about the daily lived experience of our students, it really concerns me. And I think, and I think I'm hearing with everybody, it really informs a sense of urgency. In particular, American Indian students are below average and feeling like they contribute to community lifelong learning. They lack perceptions, a good positive perception of classroom respect, belonging, trusting adults and achieving their dreams, like we've talked about. And Black students too, in particular, report lower classroom learning, belonging and the other things. And what I noticed here too is that while it gives me hope that our system is doing a better job at embracing equity, our Black staff report the opposite. And so I am interested in hearing what kind of operational plans are going to be implemented so that we can really work to retain Black staff. Because our students will never be able to feel like they belong and are well-represented if they don't have role models for them in the system.
Those are things we can report throughout the, throughout the years as we get further in. You made me think of a couple of things. Again, this data tells me we landed on the high priority work. Many are exactly where we need to be focused, that data tells us, the survey data, along with our other, you know, many other pieces of data. And then also, we've went forward, you know, since I've been here, we haven't had this kind of clarity on what's our plan, right? So being able to just have some focus, it's still comes back to, it grounds us, it gives us focus. We haven't had it till now. So I think that alone is a pretty strong variable in our success moving forward. Stay centered on the things that we prioritize. Otherwise, we're kind of, we've been really reacting by the nature of the circumstances here the last three years. So it's a combination of new things, it's a combination of renewed focus. And I'm anxious to see what the, what our data will look like in the future with being able to have time to launch this, capacity to launch everything in this packet that we looked at last month. So I'll open up for cabinet members too. Are there any other things on your mind you'd like to put in the space that you haven't touched on because?
Well, I wanted to add that, yeah, it's non-binary, non-binary staff also. I appreciate having that reporting designation for demographics, but they are also least likely to report being treated with respect. So it really elevates the importance of this equity training. And I'm looking forward to seeing how that gets implemented because I really want to see some movement on people feeling comfortable in their workspace. I'd say.
Yeah, we, I don't know if we have pictures of it, but we had a huge representation at the Abbott Summer Institute. And so we had a number of staff across the secondary sites that had teams there. So I'm excited to see how that influences the chief dreams, the goal setting, some of those pieces. Because we do want those initiatives to be not just in the Abbott elective, but school-wide, right? So Brooklyn Middle School is actually in some learning work with the University of Minnesota. They're part of the pilot link for equity. And it is an integration of trauma-informed practices melding with closely responsive approaches to that. And so their entire staff was a part of a two-day training before the launch of the school year with some serious engagement. I got to stop over and see, see their staff and it was significant. So it's a partnership between Emory University and the University of Minnesota for, for this pilot. So they're, they're part of a research study on this work. So, and their hope is that obviously our scholars feel supported in that their sense of, there's that whatever traumas, right? Big T, little T that they're, that they maybe they're living through or experiencing that staff are more, have more capacity and more equipment to support them through those, through those triggers when those things happen, maybe inside of school. triggers when those things happen, maybe inside of school. So.
So, sorry.
And I thought there's some new, those are newer.
That's really exciting because it, it kind of, just with what I've been thinking that relates to also much like Director Brooks was talking about. So it seems to me that, you know, achieving dreams is important. That, what did that look like for middle schoolers, since that's one of the issues? But one of the things that we were low on the survey was my teachers, the teachers know my middle school status, right? And their interests, right? So the Search Institute and their research on sparks and getting that spark interest, how can we capitalize on relationships and those partnerships with the equity to make sure that at least one adult in the building is, you know, helping to unleash that spark and that brilliance in order to, you know, then talk about what kind of goals you could have with that, you know, particular, you know, I notice this kid just really is always solving engineering problems all the time or whatever, but it has nothing to do, and I'm the reading teacher, I'm the literacy teacher, you know what I mean? Those kinds of things, I think, is, is the key to get that middle school. Because developmentally, they're at that, who the heck am I? Right? That's why they want boyfriend, girlfriends. Who am I? How do I define myself around them? All that. So that's kind of my, some of that's on it.
I just want to, you know, I, I think it's been really good insights hanging into the survey. I'm glad you did the survey when we did because it was at the height, kind of coming down from COVID. And it just showed, which is not surprising, exasperating the surveys that we've done. And you see that everywhere. And I really do believe with the, with our focus with the strategic plan, I mean, we're in, in the right direction. You can really feel that heart reset. I know I do in all my, my kids' school. I have this kind of a sense of renewal. I, I also think that, you know, I was interested in that CL conversation. And I know we're at that right now. But I just think that, you know, we're not going to attain, there's no way, I mean, the studies show, I mean, how do you attain academic excellence without ensuring that there is a social emotional wellbeing as well? And I was curious, and that's maybe I'll talk to you another day, I just, you know, how it is in advisory. I mean, I know that they're kind of capped, you know, in so many other things. And so kind of interested on that. So I'll, I'll jump to you on there. But, I mean, you know, just what you said before, creating the, you know, achievement that is for, in order to get there, we just have to make sure that we're, our scholars, our staff, families feel welcome and belonging and safe in every site that we have and in every classroom. And so I'm really looking at fortifying these results. I think a pulse survey would be great and, and going forward with planning the vision.
So more to come on this. So I'll transition unless I scan the room, if there's any other comments.
So one of the things, we do a staff survey that asks them about kind of what their experiences and their services focus on students, which is what we need people to do. But, you know, how are they feeling? Are they being respected? You asked, you asked questions about students being respected. Are they feeling that they're respected? I'm just curious if do we have another survey that could be a little bit deeper of the actual staff's experiences?
There are some questions in terms of the school environment and communication section of the staff survey. Is that kind of what you're looking at as you look at that report?
Yeah. I just wonder if this, is this the only survey that we're doing?
It's the, it's the main one that we do annually. Yes.
My last note myself was.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. One thing I should clarify, Brent reminded me about act metrics. So we do have quite a bit of additional data in there. And so we'll be digging into that data, reporting on that data as part of the vision cards.
We talked a lot last year about how our staff felt so stressed and overwhelmed and stretched, which really, I think, limited their capacity. And then if they're limited in that way, you know, their connections, their scholars, of course, and their families not, not strong. So I think that's kind of in that data as well, showed up there. We do that at Dolee, I think it's showing up there. With the sense of this year, I just heard from a lot more, we haven't solved it, but I think there's at least a renewed sense of, I'm back to what I'm good at. And I can focus back on teaching. And some of that stress is just not quite the same, you know, some of the entries and other things that were, we were living through are a little different. And we'll see if that's sustainable. Like I would keep building on that as we move through here. But I think, I know we've kind of picked up on that as you're talking to staff and families. All right. I'm going to transition to our one-year board calendar. It's our only other agenda item before we break for, for our listening sessions. I'm going to pass these around. Just a quick check in on the calendar.
Thank you. Yep.
Is there, is there any leftovers there?
Uh, yes. Let me send it back. Here's a couple.
All right. So just a couple of highlights I want to point out here. Remember last month, we looked at that superintendent calendar. We tried to align everything through board meetings, board PD, cabinet, system leaders, learning leaders, you know, all those things at a glance of the year. So then if we just look in the short term, in September, later this month at a regular meeting, we'll have our new introduction of our new student school board representatives. We'll have our preliminary levy information, preliminary financial report from John as well. Those are some of the highlights for our meeting later this month. Then in October, we'll have the start of school update for the work session. Begin to share with you our first monitoring report on strategic direction E, just some of our operational pieces. And then John's not here. He's at his business manager's conference. But we intend to bring forward some initial information on phase two, build a better future phase two. And I think Tom and you and Kelsey are both a part of that group, Oversight Task Force. So we're beginning to look out into the future a little bit more, keeping that work moving. Also, at the regular meeting time, I'm at least tentative with planning to do a form of a state of the district message in October. And that's something we've all talked about wanting to do. So that, I have it in kind of erasable ink here because that is the intent. Kay and Christine are supporting, putting that together. And then if you look out a little further in November, clearly the, the election's occurring. So we'll have a special meeting for the election canvassing, our LRFP budget parameters as we start looking forward. And you'll get an LTFM update too. I really want the board to see photos and visuals and videos of the finished products of things. So that's coming as well. Our financial audit comes forward to the board at the regular meeting. And then we will have kind of a referendum results. Kay will help with that and how that connects to that communication plan. And then, believe it or not, December, when the snow might be going to come down, legislative platform will begin to be working towards that. We're already planning for a legislative coffee, getting back to doing that in person again in January. So we've already started talking about that, the final two taxation hearing and the levy, annual levy as well. So there's some key markers in the calendar moving forward as we get into, starting to bring forward those monitoring reports around the strategic plan. If you look out into the spring, you'll see where the rest of those kind of land. So just my, my goal is to highlight a couple of things there. I'll kind of ask if there's any questions. I feel like the day I do this, it changes the next day. And what kind of questions do you have?
I just have one, and it's not really a big deal. But this weekend at Reliance, where I saw a lot of students who had been acknowledged in the superintendent's report, whose parents did not know that. So I was wondering if there's any way that we could notify people if they're being acknowledged in the superintendent's report.
In the recognitions or just the points of pride?
Not the recognition. So I think the points of pride, yeah. Like they had no idea that their students were recognized in that way.
I have a couple of ideas that I need to work on.
I don't know if that's an option or if it's a network or whatever. But I was, you know, and I was like, oh my gosh, is that you do blah, blah, blah? They were like, what? So anyway, that was it.
Well, that's good. Well, that's a think how we can do that. Sometimes we're literally putting that together that, because there's events that happen every quarter.
Yeah.
It'd be nice as a parent to know that was happening.
Yeah. Yeah. Especially in the seniors. They were like, oh my gosh, I'm going to have to go back and look at that so I can put it in the slideshow for grad party and stuff, you know?
Yeah. Thank you for that. That's really good. I did miss one thing too. We have our community informational meetings on the referendum. One at the end of this month and then two in October. So board members, you're, you have an event every Tuesday in October. So this is, that's the reality of things, right? Starting here in September, honestly. So it's just a busy time with all that's happening. Okay. And at any point you have questions, any follow-up questions on tonight's presentation or the calendar, please reach out to me or any of our cabinet members for any additional follow-up. I love it when we start with me because other board members might have the same questions. A lot of times like, ooh, that would be great for everyone to see. This is a really good question that we want to share with everyone. So whenever you can do that, it's helpful.
One last kind of thought I have for tonight's discussion is that, you know, we're doing a ton of learning work. We've got the survey results. There's a lot that we want to change. And as, I would just encourage you to think about as we're doing learning work, like the communication plan I thought of. If there's easy, low hanging fruit, do now, quick implementation, just have kind of quick wins rather than waiting till every, a study's complete or whole learning is complete. Just I would expect that we have a mindset that is like, that's a quick fix. We can do that right now. That we'd be doing that now to improve our outcomes. And I would expect that that's your mindset. I certainly encourage that.
I would say definitely with the communication plan, we've been doing that, especially with like our new Black board system that's coming through the text messages. Definitely one of those things that families are wanting. So we're able to do that.
When we have those quick ones, I try to put those in my weekly app too. That's, that's the real time. I'm going to try to just give you those manuals going through the 3:30, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I think we have a little break.
Okay. The board listening session is scheduled to begin at 7:15. This next session begins at 6:58.